Good evening. The San Dimas City Council meeting and successor agency meeting will come to order. Councilwoman Pratakas, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, your right hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name. I'd like to just take a few moments here to apologize to the TV audience for the delay in our meeting tonight. We've been involved in two study sessions that are very, very important in the future of our city, especially the 2026 Commission Celebration that's going to be coming up in a year and a half. There was some conversation about that along with the 2026 Committee, and I'd like to take the opportunity just to thank them and our city staff for putting forward a program that's, I think, we're all going to very much enjoy. The second study session dealt with parking in the downtown area. Now that the goal line looks like it's going to be coming to a completion soon, and we, obviously, we all know we have parking problems and parking restrictions and stuff in downtown. That's a little more complex than just saying parking problems. So we had a study session of which will be continued to a later date to discuss that. So at this point, we'll have, I'd like to have Brad McKinney, our city manager, make an introduction that's going to live with us for quite a long time.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're pleased to announce the successful conclusion of our city Assistant City Manager recruitment, which attracted an outstanding pool of candidates. And we're excited to welcome Travis Seize as our new Assistant City Manager. Mr. Seize previously served as a Deputy City Manager for the City of Bellflower, where he worked closely with the community, city manager, department head, staff, and city council. In Bellflower, he oversaw city communications, public affairs, human resources, and risk management, legislative and governmental affairs, and managed the city's homeless programs amongst other duties as assigned. Mr. Seize holds a Master's in Public Administration with a concentration in public finance management and a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science with a concentration in pre-law and modern philosophy. So with that, please join me in welcoming Travis to our team.
I just have one question. With everything you were doing, why did you need a city manager over there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council honored and thrilled to be a part of the San Dimas team. We did have a city manager in Bellflower, and he did a lot as well. But we definitely wore a lot of hats over in Bellflower, and it was a great training round, and I learned a lot, worked closely with the community and the city council, and I'm thrilled to get to know each of you better and also our community here in San Dimas.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to as staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor. The first speakers will be from San Dimas High School, S.B.
Good evening, Mayor Bedar, City Council, city manager, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Farrah Coray. This is Jacob Partis, Maddie Beck, and Lilly Persian, and we are students at San Dimas High School. Tonight, we're here to tell you what's going on with the Saints. Starting off with arts, San Dimas High School is proud to announce the upcoming Inspired by Black Student Reflection on African Americans Inspired Artistry, which is an exhibition showcasing the creative work of over forty talented student artists inspired by the work of Black and African American students, which is led by Mr. Black. Also, SDHS Drama just wrapped up their production of Willy Wonka after four nights of a spectacular show. Our ASB class went to go see it along with many students and families. Also, our choir is hosting a Coffee House fundraiser where they will be singing their own songs and covers as well as serving free Starbucks coffee on the thirteenth of this month. Lastly, our dance team has started their competition season. This Saturday, they compete at West Coast Elite Regionals at Countdown Regionals the following weekend. We want to wish our team good luck as they continue their season and give a congratulations to all soloists who placed in the top five at their hosted comp on February 1st, which include Isabella Leone, Victoria Contreras, and Farrah Coray.
Moving on to athletics, many of our winter sports have made it to CIF. Tomorrow night, we'll be hosting round one of boys' basketball at home. You can buy tickets on GoFan. The game starts at 7:00 p.m. Our girls' soccer team is competing in round one of CIF this Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. against Sunny Hills. There's no need for tickets for this game. Our girls' water polo plays Malibu tomorrow at Charter, at the Charter Oak Pool at 5:00 p.m. in round three of CIF. This is a free event. Thursday, girls' basketball will play round one of CIF at Sunny Hills High School. Tickets are also on GoFan. Friday and Saturday, our high school is hosting the Girls' CIF Wrestling Event. Tickets are on GoFan. We want to say good luck to all of our winter sports as they play in these games.
In terms of academics, our math department will be administering the interim assessment block for the CASP tomorrow to all juniors. Also, our students are preparing to pick their classes at the end of this month for next year. Finally, activities. SDHS has been celebrating our counseling team last week as it was National Academic Counseling Week. Our leadership class is preparing for elective's rush, which will be online this year to help students pick their classes for next year. Also, we are getting ready to welcome the Class of 2029 from Lone Hill as they come up to tour our campus and get excited for high school. Our annual Future Saint Night will be on March 6th, and anyone can attend. It is an open house to all. Thank you for your time tonight, and we'll see you next month to tell you what's going on with the Saints.
You know, I'd like to just take one second. I had the opportunity to go to Willy Wonka last weekend, and I was very, very impressed. It was a lot of fun. The place was pretty full. Rachel was in the audience also, and I think we were both very, very impressed with the way the audience perceived everyone. Everybody did a great job. And thank you, guys, for taking time out of your day to come here and visit with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
The next speaker will be Nora Chen with San Dimas Library.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and welcome Travis and everyone. My name is Nora Chen, and I'm the Library Manager at San Dimas Library. So to celebrate Black History Month, the library will host a program tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. to highlight the story of the ice cream inventor Ostakers, Jackson. So we will sample out different ice creams to kids for ages five to twelve, and they will vote their favorite flavor. So it will be a fun program for kids. And on Saturday, February 15th, at 11:00 a.m., we will have a BAG program. This program will encourage children to read aloud certified therapy docs. It will increase children's reading level and their self-confidence. And this week, we will have a break for our popular Smarty Pen Storytime, and we will resume that program next week for every Friday at 10:00 a.m. So please sign up at our website. And in addition to books and the programs, the libraries offer other services. So right now, we have text forms for instruction booklet for everyone to grab. And we also have a free N95 mask and free COVID testing kits. So, and we also offer the free driver handbook. So if you have needs, just give us a call, or you can visit our website for more services and details at lacountylibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Raymond Foster will be the next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and audience, and welcome Travis to San Dimas. Sylvie asked me to speak as the vice chair of the chamber. We had our networking coffee, monthly coffee hour this morning. More than thirty businesses got together. It was a really great event. Those things are getting more and more densely packed with new business and people coming from surrounding communities to participate, the networking that's going on in San Dimas. Our next mixer is going to be at the Benita Car Wash a week from Thursday. Now, Rajish is a new owner, and he's making great strides to become involved in the community. There have been some problems with that car wash in the past, and he's making a real effort to be community-oriented. So I encourage everyone to come out and join us. There's supposed to be some good food, and I think they're going to lay, they're going to come down, come clean with that promise. Next coffee hour is going to be at Starberry Farms. Almost everybody's gotten their Christmas tree, or their pumpkin, or a sandwich at Starberry Farms. It's the first time we've had a networking event there. It'll be a coffee hour on March 11th at 8:30 in the morning. Everybody's encouraged to come down, and they're supposed to have strawberries. We're keeping our fingers crossed. Now, let's change hats. President of Rotary Foundation, we got the food drive coming up, as everybody knows. On March 8th, I've challenged you, the secretary's challenged, your weight in food. Some of you, that's more challenging than others, and I get that. But I want to let you know that we now have a new website that is really, it's geared only towards this. It's called feedingmilitaryfamilies.org, and it highlights all the efforts that have come out of San Dimas. If you go just to the partnership section, you see where the Women's Club and the San Dimas Heroes and the Rotary and the Masonic Lodge and all the different San Dimas organizations have come together to get this twenty-seven tons of food. So March 8th is the food drive. March 6th is the kickoff party at High Point Bruko. Bring seven or eight cans of food, and the foundation will buy you a beer. That's what we got going on. Lots going on, so thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Raymond.
Next speaker will be Amanda Lee.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening, council members, mayor, staff, and everybody. Been a little while since I've been here. So it has come to my attention that there have been some changes to some of the So it has come to my attention that there have been some changes to some of the code for our, I guess, developments, especially for Town Core, that probably have a slightly bigger impact than many might have assumed it did. So the city had approved the Code 18.35.050, General Development Standard. I'm here to speak about Section B Alley Access. So obviously, this impacts more of Town Core, as we're about the only area, to my knowledge in town, that have alley access. That's not a standard build for neighborhoods at the moment. So the city approved the change, adding that all new or reconstructed garages shall be accessed from the alley and shall not be accessed from any street. If a drive approach apron and driveway exists fronting any street, it shall be removed and a new curb and sidewalk installed. So let's think about this a moment, right? So with the shift in building ADUs specifically, especially in these lots that are about 50 feet wide, the residents in the Town Core, one of the few with alley access, may lose their parking to their main residence due to this new change in code, even if they moved to replace the existing detached garage to the existing street fronting driveway serving the main residence. Doesn't matter that you move the garage. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter anymore. You just have to remove that driveway. That's how the code is worded. Okay? So as there is no parking off of the alley itself, okay, unless the resident adds it on their property itself, residents would need to park on the main streets. This becomes an issue, especially considering the impact the new train station and traffic, we just had a meeting about this, will have on these same Town Core residential neighborhood. This is not to mention the financial burden it would present to the resident that will now have to buy parking in front of their own house because they were forced to get rid of their driveway. There's also a safety component. This is not to mention the issue of safety. These alleys have little to no safety lights or cameras. There's no space for it. You just can't put the lights there. It is common for the fences and garages to be tagged, drug deals done in the alleys, and theft. It's much higher in the alleyways than on the main street because there's a lot more lighting, a lot more cameras facing the street. Green space, most of these lots are narrow. You're going to lose a lot of that landscaping because now people have to put in driveways that fit not only for an ADU but also for their main residence. So it's going to be all cement. Forget trees. Who needs those, right? Plus, the assumption is that the removal of the existing driveway is going to be at the city's limit.
Thank you.
Mayor, those were all the speaker cards.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Ruth Louvan. Good evening, Mayor, council, and esteemed staff. I'm speaking in regards to the solid waste management extension of December 31st, 2022. I had a chance to take a look at the Excel spreadsheet that was posted on page 178 of the agenda packet. When I took a look at that Excel spreadsheet, I couldn't help but notice that the cost for the residents of the city of San Dimas at a population of 34,000 was higher than the cost of the residents of Laverne at 32,000. Now, I'm aware that Laverne at 32,000 is higher than the city of San Dimas, but cost per cost, it seemed more significant. Residents would be paying $38.22 while Laverne would be paying $31.41. There's a higher cost for commercial, higher cost for recycling, higher cost for commercial organic, oh, except for the commercial organics. I speak out of turn there. However, I was a little bit confused by the rate of the adjustment, which if I'm not mistaken is a 75% consumer price increase and a service increase. There's a 25% disposal. I was also concerned, too, about the 5% for the service component. So the reason why I bring this up is I don't want to compare apples to oranges, just apples to apples, and we're both under the tier of waste management. I did notice that there are other companies that, A, don't have the service cost component increase, and also, B, offer rate adjustments for those that are underneath a fixed income. So we do have a lot of residents here that are underneath a fixed income, and perhaps we might, before we engage in such a renewal of contract, might want to look into those particular options. Oh, and by the way, the downtown core isn't the only one that does have an alley and a detached garage. We also have those in other neighborhoods as well, for instance, the ones that face adjacent to the high school. That would also put us in a precarious situation as well, since we have to park our cars in a drive, in our garage, in order to receive permitted parking. So if we can't park our cars in a garage, there is no permitted parking. I'm sure you can see the quandary.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion.
Mr. Mayor, actually, on item number 12, related to the waste management contract extension, could we just pull that, and then I would move to approve all other items?
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor of items 1 through 11?
Mayor, the staff is requesting that the city council also pull item number 8 on the consent calendar and not approve that yet today. We're going to bring that back later.
All right, I'll amend the motion then to pull item number 8 at the request of staff and then approve items 1 through 11 excluding 8.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. Okay, item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for staff specifically, just in light of the comments that were made during the public comment period, I know there was some discussion during the study session specifically related to both our CPI and the way the city, you know, does its fees. Could we just, for the benefit of the public, just recap, just respond to that specifically as it relates to the comparison between those cities of Laverne and us?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Lauren Marshall, senior management analyst. So if I understand you correctly, you just want to make sure it's clear to everybody how we are calculating our rate.
Right, and the, as I understood it in the study session, our model was in fact commended related to how we've structured that over the years to benefit the citizens. So I understand the, the cost seems different when you look at Laverne to us. If we could just explain a little bit about that.
Certainly. So the way our rate is calculated is two components. It's a 75% service rate, so that has to do with the processing of the waste, and then we have a 25% service component. So when you take those together, it actually ends up, like as in last rate adjustment, it's less than CPI. Whereas if you look at all of the other cities that are compared in that table in the staff report, they're actually CPI plus 1%. So they're being adjusted at a higher rate, at a greater rate than we will calculate our rates. In terms of the differences between Laverne and San Dimas, there are components of our franchise agreement that are different than, than they are, so.
And then just, since we're on the topic, our agreement also continues to provide discounts to seniors and other populations in the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay, cool. I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Any further questions? Let me raise my motion.
Move to approve the agreement as proposed.
Second.
Any, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. That'll be the end of the consent calendar. Other business. Report to the city's cybersecurity posture. IT manager, John Lee, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. John Lee, IS manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of the city's current cybersecurity posture and the initiatives planned for the upcoming year. In today's digital landscape, cybersecurity is not just an IT concern, it's a fundamental aspect of protecting our city's infrastructure, sensitive data, and public trust. Cyber threats such as malware, phishing, and ransomware continues to evolve, targeting municipalities, school districts, healthcare institutions, and law enforcement agencies. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the city's current cybersecurity measures, discuss our partnership with security experts, and outline future initiatives aimed at strengthening our defense against cyber threats. To ensure the city's cybersecurity remains strong, we have adopted industry-leading framework, tools, and best practices. We follow cybersecurity frameworks set by the National Institute of Standards and Technology, NIST, and the Center for Internet Security, CIS, critical security controls. These standards guide our approach to managing and mitigating cyber risks. Over the past years, we have implemented several key cybersecurity measures, including multi-factor authentication, known as MFA, a security feature that requires additional verification to access systems, rule-based access controls, users are granted access based on job responsibilities, reducing security risks. Phishing awareness, training, and testing. Staff regularly undergo simulated phishing exercises to recognize and avoid scams. Backup strategies, we follow the 3-2-1 backup rule, ensuring three copies of data exist, two of them on different types of media, and one stored off-site for security. And remote monitoring and management, RMM. This tool helps track IT assets, manage software updates, and enhance security. Email security measures. Suspicious emails are automatically quarantined before reaching users' inboxes. Attachments and links are scanned for threats before delivery. High-risk file types such as executables, known as .exe, and compressed files, known as .zip, are blocked to prevent malware attacks. These proactive measures help safeguard city networks and reduce the risk of security breaches. While internal security measures are critical, external partnerships play a vital role in strengthening our cybersecurity posture. Since 2019, the city partnered with cybersecurity monitoring company to provide real-time detection and response to cyber threats, alerts on abnormal activities that may indicate a potential attack, immediate threat containment, investigation, and remediation. The city also recognizes that human error is a significant cybersecurity risk. Since 2021, we have partnered with a security awareness provider to conduct simulated phishing exercise to test staff's response to potential attacks, mandatory bimonthly cybersecurity training videos to help employees stay informed on the latest security threats. To continually improve our cybersecurity posture, we have engaged in external assessments, including a cybersecurity maturity assessment in partnership with the California Joint Powers Authority in 2024. An internal and external network vulnerability assessment is to identify security gaps. Additionally, we collaborate with state and federal agencies such as California Cybersecurity Integration Center, CALCSIC, as well as cybersecurity and infrastructure security agencies, CISA, with Homeland Security. Our next major engagement with CISA includes a cyber assessment and penetration test scheduled for March of this year. Looking ahead, we are planning for several key cybersecurity initiatives. The Plan CISA Cyber Assessment will help identify weaknesses in our current security posture, potential vulnerabilities that could be exploited by attackers, and provide recommendation for strengthening our cybersecurity defense. Once the assessment is complete, we will work to remediate identified vulnerabilities. For IT infrastructure upgrades, the city's computer system was last refreshed in 2018, 2019. Current hardware is now entering year six, seven of its lifecycle. And to maintain security compliance and system efficiency, we plan to upgrade servers, monitors, computers, network switches, with operating system ensuring compatibility for future security updates. Funding for these upgrades has been included in the capital infrastructure budget to ensure continued operational security. As cybersecurity threats increases, investing in security remains a top priority. Current cybersecurity budget includes $115,000 for security technology subscriptions and licenses, $43,000 for computer professional services, and $38,000 for IT managed services. For future budget needs, the exact cost of additional security enhancements will depend on the findings from the CISA assessment. We will present cost estimates for any necessary upgrades in the 2025-26 fiscal year budget proposal. In summary, the city is talking, taking a proactive and strategic approach to cybersecurity. We have strong cybersecurity measures in place following national best practices. Ongoing partnership with security providers and government agencies in helping us stay current of threats. Future investments in cybersecurity and IT infrastructure will strengthen our defense. As we move forward, we remain committed to implementing recommendations from the CISA Cyber Assessment, expanding cybersecurity training for all staff, and upgrading our IT infrastructure to enhance performance and security. That concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions or discussion from the council.
Questions?
No, I'll just say, one, thank you, council, for indulging me in the request for this presentation, and staff, thank you for bringing it up. I think that in 2017, when I was elected, it was shortly thereafter, there was a pretty substantial upgrade of computer systems here in the city. And, you know, and I recall then, I think eventually we moved over to Office 365 and migrated to that deployment, and we've seen a number of different IT projects. I think it's important, and as we've all attended various conferences, I dragged the mayor with me to a presentation in the last year related to cybersecurity and other threats that local governments face, that it's important that we continue to invest in information technology. And obviously, standards are changing very fluid and rapidly in that evolving environment. So, John, I just want to thank you because, to be candid, it's easy to sit here and see you and not maybe have this presentation all the time, but the work that you do does not go unnoticed. I also thought this was a good opportunity to highlight the work that's been done by you and your partners, and I just wanted to thank all of you. And I do hope that staff continues to prioritize the security, because it's not just the security of staff, it's the security of the residents. There's a lot of resident information that is hosted within the city, and I think it's critically important that we continue to protect that information. So, thank you, and I do hope, and it would be my request, that should there be something that is relevant to be invested into out of any of these audits or anything the like, that it's brought forward in a tactful manner so that there is no vulnerabilities exposed, but obviously, we can understand and invest accordingly if needed.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you for the presentation, John. I think it was really well done, and like Councilmember Vania was saying, this is critically important for the entire city. For those that may not come to meetings and see John sitting over at the table behind him right now, he's always here, he's always doing fantastic work, but the, he's not in the spotlight a lot of times, but that doesn't matter. His, his work really truly is super important, and we really appreciate everything he does. He, he keeps everything working for us, so that you're, all of the efforts that you put into this really have paid off for us, so thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to John? Or about John? Thanks, thanks, John.
Mayor, I'd move we receive and file that staff report.
Any questions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or as may be determined by the chair. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time?
Yes, my name is Bill Lang. I'm a property owner in the downtown area and a business owner, and I just wanted to say two things, and I came back from that other meeting. owner, and I just wanted to say two things, and I came back from that other meeting. We've been at this about a year and a half, and I'm so grateful that Mayor Bader got in front of this a long time ago. This is really a naughty problem. We put a lot of effort in it, and Sherry has worked with me. I got a peculiar problem, because I've got people moving cars after they're dropped off, people coming out to take them in the shop, then to take them back, you know, when the product is finished, and it's really a naughty problem. And at this point, I couldn't be happier. We have come up with, for me, which is a real naughty problem, Sherry has really worked with me to solve that problem. So, as a business owner, I am so grateful. You guys get all the, the heat, and we should stand up, and I'm really grateful. And I've been out of this town now for 25 years. This is a neat community. I always, always look forward to coming back here. It's amazing what a community we have here in this town. I just thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. A couple items tonight. On Monday, February 3rd, a water, a main water line broke at the Via Verdi Park. Some people might have seen that the roped-off playground. It caused flooding on the playground area. Our Public Works team responded promptly the next morning, shutting down the backflow device to stop the leak. Unfortunately, the break only affects the irrigation and not, and does not impact the restrooms. However, the water caused a bulge underneath the playground surface, which may require some repairs, but the extent of the damage won't be known until we can tear up the, the concrete and start that work. In the meantime, staff has roped off the playground, but the restrooms are open. Because the work will be extensive, requiring saw cutting through the concrete to get to the water main, we have postponed those repairs till the weather is a little better condition, given the, the rain the next few days. So, we appreciate the community's patience as we work to resolve the issue and restore the playground to public use. Next project I want to highlight is the San Dimas Loop Project, which has made some significant progress. This week, crews are installing curb ramps, curbs, and gutters. Paving is scheduled to take place over the next two weeks, depending on the weather. When it rains, the rain's got to stop, and also the ground's got to dry out. We're also waiting on Edison's utility work. The entire project, including striping and utility adjustments, is expected to be completed the end of March 2025. So far, the major milestones included installing a 350-foot-long, 40-tall, foot-tall retaining wall, and extensive earthwork, which involved removing and replacing about 3,000 cubic yards of material, which is equivalent to filling about 30 swimming pools. Additionally, the project required the relocation of multiple utilities, including Golden State Water's main, Edison's electric conduits, and streetlights, and Frontier and Spectrum's telecommunication lines. The construction cost is approximately $2.7 million, not including the cost of utility relocations. And again, we appreciate the community's patience and support as we look to improve this roadway. Lastly, the National Weather Service is forecasting approximately three inches of rain in San Dimas from Thursday morning to Friday afternoon. In preparation for the storm, city crews have been working through the week to clear channels and catch basins and conduct additional street sweeping, given the fires and the debris from the winds, which is picked up, but additional sweep sweeping should help in, to ensure drainage systems are ready. To assist residents, the city has stockpiled sand and sandbags at the city yard at 301 South Walnut Avenue. Residents in need of sandbags are encouraged to bring their own shovels to fill up and take what they need. And during the storm, city crews will be on storm watch patrol overnight Thursday into early Friday, working to remove debris, monitor conditions, and address any street flooding and, and storm drainage concerns. So, with that, stay safe, and please take necessary precautions before the rain starts. And with that, Mayor and council, that concludes my, my comments.
Any questions of Brad? Seeing none, city, city attorney?
This evening, Mayor, no city attorney comments.
Thank you. Members of the council, council members reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency pursuant to AB 1234 CG, GC, I'm sorry. Anyone attending anything?
Yes. I attended as, along with Councilmember Nikano, who will share his thoughts, but I attended the League of California Cities Southern California Mayors and Council Members Academy, attended such classes in regards to social media, digital communications, and civic engagement, policy role in land use planning, and effective advocacy, and we discuss trending issues within the legislature right now. Very interesting, and I do thank everyone for the opportunity to go and learn, and I look forward to putting in practice what I learned.
Thank you. Mr. Nikano?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Tacos had noted, I attended the academy as well, and... In particular, I did find the sessions regarding bills that impact local control and local jurisdiction to be particularly interesting, especially as the legislature gears up for a new session. I also found the Land Use Planning and Financial Responsibilities workshop to be very prudent for this, for some of the issues that we're facing here in the city. And since I hadn't gotten a chance to attend this previously, I got a lot of value out of it, so I appreciate the city's courtesy in permitting me to attend.
Thank you. Anyone else who attended anything? Okay? Meeny, meeny, miny. Rachel?
I don't have much to report tonight. I thank you, everyone, for being here, and I just want to welcome our new Assistant City Manager, Travis. We look forward to having you as a part of our team, and please let us know how we can help you along. We can love to see you at some of the ribbon cuttings coming up and of our chamber events, and just any way I can be of assistance, please let me know.
Mr. Nikano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too don't have any comments, other than to welcome our new Assistant City Manager. You come highly recommended. We look forward to the great work you're going to be doing here in our town, and we look forward to working with you, so welcome. We hope you get involved right away in the community. You'll find that this is a community that is big-hearted and has open arms, and I'm sure you'll be a welcome addition once you get on the ground, so welcome again.
Mr. Weber?
Just a comment about the closure of the playground structure at Via Verdi Park. There's plenty of alternatives around that area, so if you find yourself looking for a playground structure, there's Ladera Sarah Park and Loma Vista Park that are very, very close by, and you can utilize, bring the kids out there. Ladera Sarah Park has a surprisingly good playground structure. My kids like to go there, over Via Verdi Park, as a matter of fact, for whatever reason, but they like that one, so there's plenty of options. And, you know, maybe the next couple of weeks or something like that, we'll have, have Via Verdi Playground back up and running. For now, we just have a splash pad that is in the middle of winter, but we'll get that fixed as soon as we can. And then also, welcome Travis. It's truly a pleasure to have you here. I'm sure you're a great relief to Brad, who's been picking up both roles for a while, which he's used to at this point, I think, but it's, it's great to have you. Look forward to working with you and, and all of the, the good work that we're going to be doing moving forward.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. One, I wanted to thank staff for, as always, getting ready for the incoming storm, so thank you, Sherry and crew, as well as the parks. My wife and I recently adopted or rehomed a dog, and I've been up at the park a lot, and that has been very interesting, walking the trails, but I do appreciate that we continue to keep the trails in good form, and so thank you, Scott. I also appreciate the fact that it seems like every time I go up there, I don't know if it's coincidence, but there's always city staff up there, so I don't know. I just see the trucks as I cruise by, and it's pretty funny, but I do appreciate the time staff takes up at Horse Steve Canyon Park. And specifically, that park, as it relates to rain events, is challenging with drainage, as we know, and so I hope, you know, every time I go up there during the rain to check on it, it's always, I mean, Kersha Patel would talk about this runoff, you know, and it's, it's a nut we have yet to crack, but I think one day we will, and I do appreciate the improvements to the Equestrian Center, too, related to drainage, that has been helpful. Speaking of that, on February 13th, the San Dimas Community Emergency Response Team is going to be hosting an event, and the public is all welcome. Come learn about the Community Emergency Response Team here at City Hall. It's a public meeting where you can learn more about the CERT program, and also learn how to be better prepared for an emergency. So, I do hope people get engaged. Our CERT program has, in fact, been very momentous since we revived it in the 2015-ish time when we started talking about it. And since then, although they don't have radios and guns and batons, as some feared they may one day, they are, in fact, very much active in making phone calls. They've been helpful during the pandemic. They have, in fact, made phone calls to do welfare checks through the pandemic in partnership with the sheriff's station, and the CERT team continues to be a very important part of this community. And not only from the disaster preparedness perspective, but these people also continue to be involved in our community events as volunteers. And so, I can't say enough about Larry Gianoni and, and all of the volunteers that have been around for a very long time, being very helpful to the community here in San Dimas, so thank you. Lastly, Travis, welcome. I worked in the city of Bellflower at one time, once upon a time, and I'm really excited for you to be here and work with us. Look forward to getting to know you, and I hope at the next council meeting, you'll give an update regarding the Coyote Management Plan, so welcome and have fun. It's, it's a cool place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say I don't have anything, but I guess I should say something. Travis, welcome. Okay? I think you owe me about 33 minutes, okay? And then, so sometime in the next three or four months, I'll, I'll keep, keep a track, and you can tell us in 33 minutes about why you decided to come work for Brad. But thank you very much, and Brad's looking very much forward to some help, and, and we certainly appreciate your level of experience and, and things like that. You know, one of the youngsters that mentioned today about basketball team tomorrow, starting their first round of CIF playoffs, they're doing pretty good. Our, our girls are doing great. They, last I checked, they were 6-0, you know, as far as the last six games, and they were doing well, and I'm not sure exactly where they stand today, but get a chance, go, go, go watch these kids. They, they're having fun, and they know how to play the game, and we appreciate that. Mentioned Willy Wonka. It was very well attended, and there's just a lot of, lot of things going on with our, our kids, which make, eventually make our community, because it's amazing how many of these kids go off to college, come back, go to work at our schools, and rejoin our community. So, I just want to remember those type of things that we, we need to profess. As I said earlier, we had a study session concerning the downtown parking, parking plan. We're not sure exactly where it's going to go, but I will tell you that Sherry and her crew have been really working on it, and we got a lot, lot of different planners involved. A little earlier, Bill Lang, who's been a businessman and property owner in San Dimas for well over 50 years, he makes all these meetings. I think Sherry will tell you that. He's flying down from up north to be here, and I'm beginning to think that, I'm not worried, that he's worried about where we're going. He just wants to show, show support for our, for Sherry and her crew, that this is going to be a long-term partnership between the community and the parking and the A-line. I always want to say gold line, but it's, it is the A-line, so that's good. So, I don't have much more to say, so I'm going to just close it out and ask. About a month ago, we lost a LA County retired deputy that lived in our community for, for many, many years, and a lot of people, if we all know, we do have a skate park in town, and most people who know anything about the skate park know that if it wasn't for Dave Campbell, we may have never had a skate park, but he really pushed for the kids, and we have a skate park over at Pioneer Park, and I'd asked that we close the meeting in, in his honor.
Mayor, we, we will be going into a closed session for real property negotiations.
Okay. We'll close the meeting tonight in, in honor of Dave Campbell, who was a LA County Sheriff's Deputy for more years than I can remember.
Mr. Mayor, I support that. I just, I was wondering if we could, I could request a, a new item related to that topic. I know in the past, you and I have specifically discussed the efforts that Dave Campbell put into that skate park, and I know in the past, we've, we've mentioned potentially commemorating that skate park in his honor, and so I wonder if there would be an appetite to discuss that and, and how we could do that in the future.
Yeah, I would support that.
Okay, thank you. Then, staff, I just would like to get that in the near future, and thank you, Mayor, for obliging that.
Thank you. Okay? I move for hearing.
Move to adjourn and go into the closed session.
Tonight, we're going to move into the closed session in eight minutes.